The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thing on list tonight is the public hearing ordinance violations. We have five properties that are in question here. This is a new way we're going about this, right?
That is correct.
Correct. It is all brought to through the council by other people. And now we have to look at the procedural way of yes, the problems that exist on properties. So. Everybody.
Oh, this might be mine, I think.
You have an address?
Two twenty-four South Hubble.
Okay, you're on top of the list.
Well, anyway, we got everything cleaned up, but the car that's there, honey, is workable and and working. But power that they had there before has been long gone since.
Hang on just a second. Were you done with your opening?
Yeah, okay.
I need you to uh voice your name and address, please. Everything's recorded.
Chris Brown, my address is two twenty-four South Hubble. I've had my granddaughter in here for a while. And she did make a mess. You should see the inside. But if it didn't clean up, it's just gonna take down. And the car that's there, though, when they sent that out, it must be the car that's in there is it's still there, but it's running and it's got tabs and everything now is not, it's not.
It's sitting in the backyard or?
Yeah, it's in the backyard. It's not on the grass. So there's gravel underneath that. There's a few blades of grass coming up there because the ground didn't hold it all back.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so we did the initial inspection of this and there was weeds. I mean, we don't even really need to talk about what there was because it was all cleaned up. So I had that on morning.
Oh, it's been cleaned up for a long time.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's been in, I don't monitor the properties. I have no interest in looking at property every day. So I I went and looked this morning and yeah, yeah. So there were no existing ordinance violations that I noticed there.
So I'm done. I don't have to pay hundred fifty because they don't, the car that's here now is not the car that was there, but and that was way back. July third, she was supposed to have everything out of there.
So it's registered to your granddaughter, I take it, or?
See, the TVs have been moved. Um, the car's got tabs on it and then the weeds are being taken care of.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yep.
Did we have an individual? Thank you very much for admitting there was a mess.
Oh, you know.
Thank you very much for that.
I thought she was gonna do all that. I would have kicked her out earlier, but I didn't know. You don't expect your granddaughter to do that.
Oh, right.
Thank you very much for bringing it up and making our job easier.
Okay, then that's good.
You're good. It's good, yep.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for.
The mess, but you know, I like I said, if I knew she could do that, I'd kick her out earlier.
Thank you for showing up and taking care of it.
You didn't see, you see my furniture out there in the back before?
Well, some of them leaned up against the shed.
Yeah, in the hallway, in the alleyway.
Just carry it out and set it there. They must have took some kind of a thing to it and they broke everything. Pick it up and go store it. It's broken. It was so stupid. I don't know what she's. You've got mental problems.
Young, young kids, yeah.
Well, you don't think that last boyfriend was, I think he came with drugs.
Yeah, that'll be.
I don't know for sure, but who else? Why else would she ever do something like that? It's the only thing I can think of.
Yeah, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I have hardly no more to do left.
Okay, the second one is on six twenty-one Main Street. This one here, I take it, has way too many vehicles in the yard. Because isn't there like nine?
Uh, there, yeah, so four cars and food trailers is what's allowed in there is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, uh, at least ten vehicles.
And you talked to the individual Eli a time or two?
So when uh, when this report was made, yes, I I did make contact uh, residential, we talked and um, he talked about doing an action plan and I I said that encourage it. I uh, have not heard back from him for doing that action plan yet, so.
So now the second letter has been sent out with a hundred and fifty dollar fine, right?
August thirteenth.
Is that what it says?
Yeah, I don't have that. Oh.
Second letter sent, August thirteenth.
I gave you all the pictures. No, you're good.
No improvements done, it says.
Correct.
Except there was a few weeds knocked down.
He had, yeah, he had knocked some of the weeds down.
Yeah.
As far as the multiple vehicles, nothing's been.
Again, I don't monitor them day by day, but when I drove by um, and double checked everything this morning, rode it, didn't appear that anything had moved.
So the second letter sent, if there's no action in what thirty or forty-five days, what's your then?
Counsel, like I said, counsel does the hearing tonight, decides if there is a nuisance, and then we give them, have the sheriff's department serve a letter. They have thirty days to comply or have an action plan, and if not, then we turn it over to our attorney and he does the legal actions and the indictment process.
Well, ten vehicles is a little bit over allowed. There's also building materials there that are neatly piled. But are they ever gonna be used, you know? The weed's gonna just grow up in between it all and it just sits there? Anybody else with a comment?
It's funny when you talk to people from out of town and they do come through, they make comments about our main drag.
Yep.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think it's it's uh, time to move to the next step and.
And chances are it'll run into the winter and then there'll be, you know, probably won't get done by winter.
Well, and I think, yeah, that's some of these properties, and I'm I'm gonna speak in general, not just about this property, but some of these properties have uh, been allowed to be in this state for long enough. We can't expect uh.
Overnight.
An overnight.
Yeah.
No, but they have had the second letter, so they have obviously had. They've had a month minimum.
If they pay the fine, then. Hmm, what's the second fine? Of like, if if someone's fine with like, oh, here's a hundred and fifty bucks, like, whatever, move on.
They still are, they're still a noncompliant. They're still in violation.
So a hundred and fifty, like a month or?
No, the the fine is a lot of, so in a perfect world, they would do it right away. The second, and then if they don't do it, they get a fine. They're like, well, geez, we better get it done. We get it done, we come to the council. Council has the right to waive that fee.
Okay.
As long as it's done or there is an action plan that is followed. If there is no action plan or there's nothing, they get the fine and then they come to this, then we have this meeting. And then council can decide that, yep, they list the findings that are in violation, what needs to happen, and then we send it, like I said, we serve them that letter.
So we'll see if they pay the fine and make movement then.
Right, yeah.
Otherwise.
So this next step would be to send them that letter to have them served. The sheriff's department will have to serve the letters.
Sounds good.
Uh, we'll keep proceeding. This one is still listed as active then.
That'll be in the, the letter that I sent them. That will be.
Okay, the next one is seven thirty. Chapel. Eli, do you have a report on what's happened there at all?
Yeah, so did they uh, do you have the record? I have it. So there is a vehicle um, not registered, has not appeared in the neighborhood for some time. Uh, that vehicle is still in the front yard, not on a, on a dirt surface. Um. And I was only violating.
Yeah, because I think they've hit their weeds. The weeds have been taken care of.
So, yeah, it's just one vehicle parked in the front yard on the, on the grass and uh, expired registration doesn't appear to have been operated or moved recently.
It's been there for quite some time. Well, with that being said, then, this follow suit like you have here, you've sent the second letter out, August thirteenth. Weeds have been trimmed, removed by a fifty hour fine for not moving the vehicle, right? For getting rid of it? Or licensing it, or putting it on a hard surface driveway, or crushed rock?
So again, we call this one active and it's on our list for the sheriff's department.
Correct.
Definitely.
Okay, we'll move on to seven thirty-eight Chapel. That's quite the street for you guys up there. Far end, um, well, Eli, do you want to give an update again? If that's the best.
Yeah, uh, so the initial letter was for um, rank growth of weed, weeds. Uh, and then a camper and a stop, you know, both with expired tabs. On August twenty-seventh, property was observed from the right of way. Uh, there's a Winnebago camper with tabs expired in twenty twenty-two and did not appear to be on a hard parking surface. Uh, appeared that it had not moved or been usable in quite some time. Uh, also positively encroaching on the right of way. Uh.
That's a hindrance in the snowballing world.
Mm-hmm. Uh, also, uh, this is a little bit hearsay, but come from from multiple sources that the property owner has stated that that he does not directly own that.
Talked to the individual today and he has the title. Title is not in his name for that camper. I said, well, we'll probably give you thirty more days to get that transferred into your name if he wants to sell. So I says, if you want to take and do that, we'll work with you. And as far as the Dodge of the Rango, I said, make room in the garage if you don't want to put tabs on it or plates on it. Oh, it's got plates, expired tabs. Rolled in the garage and nobody will say a word.
Yep.
So that's where that one's at.
So for the the purposes of defining this process, we would find him in violation. Uh, he can, has the thirty days and he can take it in that time? Or is there alternative?
He has a process, basically. He's has a plan.
Has a plan, yeah.
He has a plan.
Right. Well, I don't have to be proud of each day.
But if he has a plan, we have to give him that time.
That's fine.
To follow through with that plan.
There's progress.
So we can, we can review that again in another thirty days.
Would be beneficial to have him give his plan in writing. I think so.
Yeah.
Just for.
Yep.
Sign and do.
Yep.
Right, I believe that's what the letter request.
Right, yeah, that's what they're supposed to sell.
And then how about the marijuana plants and weeds and?
Uh, interestingly enough, most of the uh weeds around the house in that were knocked down, other than a large amount of marijuana plants that are over eight feet tall. Yeah.
Yeah, I know. And what's the ordinance on that?
Yeah, it's way too high.
Uh, yeah, I would consider it a rank growth of weed.
But it's a plant.
Is it a noxious weed?
It is not noxious. There are very few actual noxious weeds, uh, but it's, they're not, you can consider that cultivated um, or maintained.
There's a fine line there.
We get them all.
Marijuana or is it that?
You know.
I don't know how to discern, especially again, I'm not entering the property or I'm going.
If it's marijuana, then he'd be in violation of statute. Our um, ordinance on cannabis because he doesn't have a permit to grow marijuana.
Yeah.
You can't be a homegrown cannabis.
I appreciate if it's licensed through.
I say it, rinders for cultivation are permitted as a permit use A one uh, agricultural residential district and uh, conditional use in R one residential.
If he had it in his house, it's one thing.
Yeah, but this is outside.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, is it, is it regular marijuana or is it just that old Minnesota hemp that used to grow all wild all over?
Yeah.
I wouldn't be able to differentiate the difference between the other, but yeah, no.
No idea.
I think even if in his house, he's smoking or something.
Bye.
He would, but if he's growing in the house, he'd still have that permitting. Through the state.
Probably do whatever you want in their house.
Personal use. Not for your own personal use. If you're going to sell it, it's different.
You love so many plants.
Yeah, you're gonna use it for your personal use, but.
How many plants do you think are there?
I mean, there's a patch. There's a, there's a pretty good patch.
I never even paid any attention to that.
Well, it it became pretty obvious when everything else was knocked down that.
Yeah, those are some.
There's sunflowers, yeah, there's sunflowers and then there's that, and that's the only.
All about the sunflowers?
Uh.
Or no?
No, I think the sun, I don't remember, but.
Well. With this one, with those weeds, you could take them a copy of what John was reading off of and tell him he has to abide by that or he has to knock them down, right?
Either get a permit or whack them down.
Yeah.
Was there a height uh, statute in that, John?
Oh, that's just, that's just reading from our recently passed ordinance, I'm.
Yeah, I was looking for that just for the height.
Does that stuff grow that tall?
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's above the frame of the walk door.
Really?
Well, it's, it'll be eight, ten feet in here. So called real people who's going orders.
I, yeah.
Well, just take us, copy of that, give it to them. You tell them, you know, he's either got to get licensed through the state or it's got to come away.
Within how many days?
Yeah.
The ham statutes is.
Do we always have to give extra number of days? That give?
Yes, we have to give them, yes.
Is that, what's the managing number?
I don't.
Thirty days?
Number is, I just know that when we send them that third letter, it's thirty days.
So for an action plan, it's in, it's undefined, right? So you could, if the property is dirty enough or or I guess would require enough work, they could say, hey, I need six months, and if that seems reasonable to council, then we can accept that.
That'll be the next one.
Yeah, but it, but that's.
Never gonna agree to something like that unless it's a plan where you have progress.
So what's in ten days with your action plan that you're either going to apply for a permit or whack it down? He should, he should know in ten days what what he wants to do with it.
Right.
Right.
So.
So are we gonna, are we gonna find him in violation and have him served? And do we want to just put that in that letter?
Well, it sounds like he's done some, so I would say.
Well, we can't send him a, we can't serve him because he's, he's got an action plan for that camper.
Okay.
So if we.
We can give him a timeframe to get that camper.
Somebody needs, you'll have to talk to him or whoever and get an action plan and writing from him about that camper, and then at that time, find out what his, you know, maybe he he needs thirty days to take care of that too. Maybe he can do that in ten days. I don't know. Fifteen days, whatever.
He can get back to you in ten days.
Yeah.
So it's not drawn out.
And then we'll be, that way we could still report back to council at the next meeting.
Give him ten days that you would come up with a plan in thirty days overall to get, get it taken care of?
Mm-hmm.
That sound like it, that's reasonable?
That should be, I mean.
That was.
And if not, then he can let us know if something is more reasonable.
Yeah, and that was Apple and you have this one. So I want to keep track of where I find.
So ten days to do an action plan.
It's not his name.
In writing.
No, but he said he's got the title.
Yeah.
So.
But if it's not signed.
Thirty days.
I told him he's got to get the title signed over to him and then, but you know, it's a camper. This isn't the wrong time of the year to be selling a camper. So, I mean, this could go on till next spring. Is that camper sellable at all? Who knows? Does it run? Nobody know. You just ask him them questions, Eli, if it runs.
Yeah, at the same time, we don't, it's, it's still his property, so he just thirty days has to figure something out.
I would think so.
Or.
He should have the title.
Compromise with a reason why.
Yeah.
Because it's sat there for two years plus now, probably. Not one thing has been done, of course, and now you know that we're asking for something be done. There'll be a ten thousand reasons why you can't do that.
Now we want time, so.
All right, enough on that one. We got another one here at eight forty-four Chapel. This all the way from that one.
So property was again inspected from the right of way on August twenty-seven. Uh, there was at least one piece of equipment that uh, appeared to be an asphalt maintenance uh, trailer. There's also a skid loader part uh, and skid loader and attachments parked in the front yard um, in the dirt.
Yep.
And not customarily used for residential purposes. Uh, and I, do you want me to read the violation that I'm dependent eased out?
Well, I think so because that's a very, if I lived on that street, I'd be here every meeting.
Yeah.
After this council to get that mess cleaned up.
So ninety-two oh twenty-five sections A and B.
Is he even living on that property?
No.
Not known.
Used as a storage dump.
Well, yeah, right away, it's residential, it's not commercial.
Yep.
So we're not storing stuff in residential front yard.
Right, and that, that's basically ninety-two oh twenty-five A, outside parking and stored on residentially zoned properties of large numbers of vehicles and vehicles, materials, supplies or equipment not customarily used for residential purposes. Um. I could read on or if you have copies of that.
And you'll never get a hold of anybody at that exit. Well, them kids weren't showing up there.
But that's, yeah, I guess that's where if it's a violation, we, you know, the sheriff's department serves them and then hopefully we can get.
But nobody's living there, so how are they gonna find him?
They'll find him.
They do, yeah.
Uh, know where he is.
A camper and enclosed trailer parked in the front yard again, uh, just on dirt surface. Uh, I made an old spot on the front yard. It mostly buried dirt due to, due to the amount of uh, traffic and lack of maintenance from the equipment. Um, where they aren't driving, uh, it is unmanaged uh, weeds throughout the property. Um, numerous piles of what appear to be scrap iron or refuse.
Yep.
Including multiple discarded appliances, garbage, tires. And a camper and enclosed trailer again on dirt surface, maybe already covered that.
Yeah.
Well, there'll be no action taken and there probably will be no action taken if the sheriff dropped the lot, but at least that's the right direction to have on that one. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah, well, there's enough code violations are listed here that uh there'd be no argument on what uh, that action is needed.
I mean, they, they intentionally dumped off the scrap iron in the front yard. And of other people that live there, gotta look at that mess. And it's been there, what, all summer? Basically, all summer. Uh, so why would you drop it off there when Buford's five miles away? It makes no sense. People just. Wow. Anyway, here are them five ordinance violations. Anything else, Apple? If not, we can close the public hearing and open up the civil meeting. Let me make a motion, close the, I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
On paper, say aye.
I oppose.
Motion carried. All right, um, open up the regularly scheduled meeting. Agenda, we have a consent agenda that we're gonna start doing here. The items below are the routine things that we do every month. And it would just save a lot of time if we just made a motion on them. Unless somebody on council brings out a question, we can discuss that, but otherwise make a motion on A to D. And it'll speed up our meetings considerably. So with that said, has anybody got a questions on this consent agenda this time? If not, somebody might make a motion to approve, make a motion to approve. Someone to second?
I'll second it.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. All right. Any comment? Anybody addressing the council? Got three minutes and state your name and that's it.
There's only one person here.
Yep.
It could be me, John Lewis. Do you need the address or just my name?
Your name is that.
John Lewis, I just have two quick questions. Who is our city emergency management director?
Robert, I believe.
There, okay. And who is on the emergency management organization?
Robert, Eli and myself, along with Eric Weller, and some other representatives of the council.
Okay. So ahead.
All right. Anybody else? If not, we'll move on.
Have them names.
Sure.
Thank you.
Three depth date, Eli.
Uh, yeah, so we did uh, we did, didn't get too striping yet. I did want to put to, uh, we are on the schedule for Friday. Um, I did put this plan in for uh, Howe Street in front of the um, church, those are covered church, uh, post office, bell tower and uh, two residents there. And uh, I believe that was diagonal. One times, um, that's kind of approved being that we weren't done there scheduling.
When you have them diagonal on both sides, Eli, what kind of room would there be in between the middle of?
Bush, the street is fifty-nine and a half feet curb to curb. Uh, I believe it's, he's taken. I might have it here. I believe they come off roughly, it's five feet from the curb. It's a half, um, that they got thirty and then they're still usually uh, thirty.
Thirty, probably.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I mean, is this something we want to proceed on and have this done? So we uh, I would probably give the church more parking spaces because right now it isn't.
And even.
No direction.
Even in front of the post office, it would help kind of give some.
Direction, yeah.
Felineation to where you should or where you shouldn't.
Park like that already and then go.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's been diagonal parking in front of the post office for years, yeah.
And they labeled, but.
No, uh, no.
Been wore off or.
Now it's now needs to be diagonal too.
Yeah. So there we'd have to go through the county, county stated, and they'd have to design them. Yeah.
What I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Right in front of the church where the curb, uh, is there a curb cut there right in front of the doors? Is there a curb cut there?
There is.
Because we wouldn't.
I walked, yeah.
We wouldn't want to have no diagonal parking right there.
Not in front of it. Handicap accessibility.
The handicap.
Do we have a handicap? That was my next.
There is a pad ramp uh, on the corner of Sherman and.
Both side there, yeah. Yep, okay.
And that's where we're, we're off of that corner. I don't remember how far exactly, but we were off of that corner. I think I tried to stay twenty feet to the. And that's where we're, we're off of that corner. I don't remember how far exactly, but we were off of that corner. I think I tried to stay twenty feet to the back of the stall.
Yeah, okay.
Cause we, we approved the quotes last month, right?
Correct, yep.
So, there's a resident that lives there across from the street. Only thing I can see is diagonal parking. There'll be diagonal parking there, but. That kinda hinders snow plowing, you know, when it's just parallel. It's only, you know, what, seven and feet wide and you can really get the street opened up. So, with diagonal parking there, that's gonna be different. You know, but there is also parking along, parallel parking along or, uh, the south side of the property. So you could eliminate the problem there.
Yeah, so common courtesy would be to.
Yeah.
Keep them open.
Or is there any questions on this? Because if we do this on this Friday, that's kinda permanent, so we, uh, so. Three years from now, anybody got any protocons?
Uh, I think it's a good idea.
I agree. Be done.
Good idea, good idea. And well, yeah, all right.
Uh, next, uh, we have a resident, so two things, uh, and I believe this was brought up maybe last, uh, phone meeting, but. We do have, uh, Travis from Safe, Safe Step is gonna come and review some areas that may need. Attention on sidewalks. We also have a resident requesting there's angled sidewalk currently in their boulevard. And they wanna do steps instead of that. It, I don't know what the angle is.
The ramp?
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty heavy ramp right now and they wanna do steps down. And just kinda looking for direction on, do we provide? Uh, what assistance do we provide for people who want that, if any? Um, or I think in the ordinances, it talks about. Sidewalk maintenance in general, if there's issues identified on your property, but.
Is it talk, got a, sunk sidewalk from the sidewalk now to the curb?
Correct.
But that's awful steep too?
That is steep, yes. I don't know the angle, but.
When we redone that sidewalk down there, going to the school, if there was a sidewalk there, we reported or whatever. We, the city picked up from the sidewalk to the curb.
Okay.
So, would we maintain that same protocol?
Sure, or is that guy gonna tell you what?
So we're gonna talk sidewalk maintenance in general and, and issues that, that. Need to be addressed as far as lips and stuff on the sidewalk, but, um. So there will be some, some stuff next meeting on things that need to be addressed and, and hopefully a quote and that, but. Uh, I'm curious on this because, uh, this was requested by residents. What do we do when they want steps or?
Well, is this on, uh, city street or is it on the county road?
City street.
Okay, so it's not on the county road coming through town.
Correct.
It's on a city street.
And then what they wanna do behind the sidewalk to the house would be theirs.
Their problem.
Would, is there a problem there?
Isn't it?
Well, I, yeah, I don't.
To their house, I think it is.
Uh, yeah, I don't know. Are you speaking in this, this case or in general?
Well, in general, anything behind the sidewalk going towards the house was always.
Okay, yep.
But.
Boulevard, like you said, if we've done it in the past, then we should do it again or whatever.
Yeah. Is it a very long runway?
No.
Six, eight feet?
Probably not even that.
Yeah, okay. Yep. Are they gonna line up and have somebody pour their sidewalk to the house? Would it be done at the same time?
I don't know that, in this case, I don't know that it's an issue with the sidewalk to the house. I think they just wanna get that steep.
Oh.
Ramp and get steps into.
On our portion.
Okay.
Basically a safety issue. So, yeah, it'll be at the city's bill to pick this.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So could we ever tie this in to the new curb that we need to put down there on the other project?
I mean, I would, I wouldn't just have somebody come and do the steps, yeah, I think, I think, yeah, and hopefully. After Wednesday, we identify a few spots and then we can get somebody to come in and give us a bit. A bunch of it. And then one question I had, and I guess I, they could have put more in here, but in, in the ordinances, it refers to hard parking surface. That's somewhat subjective and one of the things I've heard when working with residents is, well, there was gravel here, this was gravel. Um, I think we should consider making a definition maybe for next meeting of what constitutes an approved or, or in a, a hard parking surface.
You know, if you take some good class five and you pack it, it'll get pretty darn hard and stay that way. But you have to also keep the weed tone in it, you know, otherwise it's gonna look like grass and weeds. So, I mean, my thoughts are, if they're good enough to get it off the street, and just get themselves a nice. Grade five bill, pack it. That, that would be adequate or better than, you know, sitting there with the weeds growing up around it all over.
So in this, again, this is rhetorical, cause I know this question is gonna come. Well, they had gravel there, so what?
Yeah, but it's gotta represent.
Make it look like gravel.
Yeah, you gotta make it, maybe it needs to be freshened up then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's there, it's not, no big deal then to put something on top.
Yep.
Freshen it up, make it look legit, not a bed of weeds that.
Like a parking.
Or I guess you're gonna have to use some weed killer and get rid of the weeds so you can see what is under it.
Because that'll be, that'll hold true, but there is gravel there, or there was, not gravel and just trying to get by. Right, so.
Even your ordinance, like concrete asphalt or compacted by five material. Then it's, just spell it out so you have something going.
I think it is talked about.
That, soon as you just said that, I think there's something in there regarding, but I could be wrong.
No, I thought there was.
There was something to it.
The only thing I've seen in, in, at least in the new ordinances is approved hard parking surface or something to that.
I guess, yeah, we should maybe make it classified, fact, or consider the hard parking surface.
Yeah, if they had gravel or they can just refresh it with something.
Yeah, well, you'd make it simplified, plain simple, what you just said, boom.
So I guess it, it's paved or gravel parking surface or in driveway.
Yeah.
So. Gravel has to look like gravel, there has to be gravel there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. Anything else, Eli?
That's all I got.
How about, uh, preparing for winter? Anything? Um, that's one snowplow down there. Is that the main snowplow that's down at the lagoon?
That'll, that's the main snowplow for the single accident.
Yeah, where's the, the parts one? Is that sitting?
That is in, in the woods, yes.
Okay.
That's down there as well, it's just not the one that's sitting up on the gravel.
Do you think there's anything that needs to be done?
So I haven't looked at that. I was gonna dive into that international, cause we got other things that for sure need to be done, uh.
And, uh.
A little bit of time, the lower latch on the. And you're spreading gravel on that, at four fifty, the lower latch wasn't working, that was all seized up. I spent a little bit of time getting that. And then also the box stand for when I grease the box, the box stand was seized up, so. Got that done, um, yeah, this weather has definitely had me thinking about.
Yeah.
Get ready for winter, but.
It's gotten cold, Larry.
Chris Steele was working on the. Standard, they put that new control on the back of the sanding unit itself, but then they needed the new control box in cab is what they said. I don't know if you followed through and checked any, maybe check the wiring and see what you can come up with, you know? And what's the name of that control in that?
Dicky John.
There you go, there you go.
Supposedly they had ordered that.
Yeah, we were there that day and.
We're gonna order that and get it in, but they.
The day we picked it up.
Chris Steele was really horrible about getting back to me when I dealt with them on everything.
Yeah.
It seemed like they're way too busy.
Maybe you can go on the internet and find a Dicky John of your own.
Turn safe search off.
Don't know what you're gonna get on the computer.
All right.
Yeah, sure, that would bring my.
Yeah, Eli. We can move on to water.
You've been going on in the water room, uh, I'll be doing the previous charge sample, we'll charge in a week or two. Turn over and clean up. Um, I also have our influence sample to collect and take over to the lab and do all, uh. The, uh. The quote that you guys have in front of you is for the lift station down, I mentioned the previous council meeting that we're getting reverse. Uh, signal on the full meter at the lift. And, uh, what that means is that when the pump is already here. When the pump runs and then it stops, the water just flows backwards into the lift station, fills it up again and then it pumps forward. So you're constantly wearing out your pump.
Yeah.
Because of this. And so I had, uh, had them come down to do an inspection to find out why this is taking place and the, the second. Small pump has a, a bad check ball, it's got a ball check in there and it's worn out. And, uh, the bolts and everything that were on the, uh, on the, uh. Cover for where you can try to get that ball and replace it, we're not, they just ruined it. Oh, there's nothing, nothing left because they've been in water for. This was to, um, to put in. Oh, yeah, there's an isolation valve down there too that they can't even, they can't shut it off to, to make the repair. They have to replace that as well. Of, it's an item one, that's true, but they're gonna put a swing check in instead of a ball check. New pipe plans, orange, orange plans. Um, well, gasket kits, installation labor and fricking, that's forty-eight hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, total debt, nine thousand seven hundred dollars. And the others, the other part of the quotes is the upgrade, the guides. We did the other three pumps with stainless steel pump guides that. When you, when you pull the pump, you drop down a fishing hook and you hook the top of that motor and then you extract the motor to find these guides. From the bottom to the top. The other three we've already done, um, with stainless steel guys. This one still has cable guides like, uh. Stainless steel, uh, wire rope cables and, uh, and they're old and decrepit, so. We thought since they're in there doing this in the bottom, rather than paying twice and having to have it backed and have somebody do the confined space. Entry and all that, that they, while they're in there, they could install the new, the new pump guides and it's done, all four are done, up to modern standards. So, uh, with your approval, this is kind of a must do. It's not something that we really can delay. Um, he can get us on his schedule and come in and, uh, do the work when they, when they get a chance. The thing that's not included, you see at the bottom is the back truck. I think last time we had someone's on hand. And they would back it and then just pump it in, into the pond and then back it to keep their, to keep their angles from getting wet, so.
That's, for the ninety-seven hundred, that's all in for both of those, one and two, or is the ninety?
No, that's, that's for item one. Item two is thirty-eight.
Okay.
Fifty. So that's additional.
So we're looking at thirteen-five?
Yeah, thirteen, fourteen thousand bucks, yeah. That's all gotta be done, I'd say that. You're wearing out them pumps.
Routine maintenance, uh, if we wear out that pump, that's probably seventy thousand dollar pump. We're just running it over and over and over and over again, cause it's.
How about our building?
Uh, today they said, you got an update today, they're asking for the color. We would like for the metal on there, so. We gave them idea, but we thought it might like, you know, look nice for color. And, uh, I would imagine they'll be ordering the steel. Oh, and shortly, I would, what did he?
The lumber, he said the lumber package is gonna be out mid-September. Once that gets out here, we can do the gold face and get. The lumber framed up. And then he said he was, you know, he wanted to wait and measure and make sure all the dimensions are correct when he orders the steel. But it sounded like the steel was pretty short. It takes a week, yeah, yeah.
Coming along and then, uh.
Do we need a motion for this soon?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to prove the quote from quality for.
Someone to second? I'll second with, on favor, say. All right, motion carried.
Thanks. And as far as quality flow is concerned, I, they are the best people to work with I have ever. I, I've, I've come with these guys for over twenty years and they have never done something that let me down. The company to work with. Um, oh, and then lastly, I've been working with Eli, training him and teaching him things as we. Run across each other out at the pond and we have a little meeting today up at the, we, uh, street department. Uh, to get him working towards getting his class D for the wastewater part of his license. So for that, he only needs one year. For the water, it was three. Um, and so our plan potentially is in March. Uh, Minnesota Rural Water puts on a water and wastewater conference in St. Claus. It's a three day, it's a Wednesday, Thursday and a Friday. Um, I need to attend that this year to get my moving credits to maybe get my license. But at, at that conference, you follow one of two tracks, the water side or the wastewater side, sort of different classes all day long. Uh, they're gonna offer a class D, um, license, uh, so it's, it's two days of solid training or prep, test prep. And then on the last day, Friday, you take the exam. And so I would recommend that. When it comes close to that time, you guys approve that Eli and I both go there, uh, I'll do my thing and then he can do that exam prep. And at the end, he'll be licensed, which will get right about the year, cause you started, what, March, April?
Hey, yes.
So by the time it's mailed, mailed out to him and whatnot, then, uh, and then I can continue to oversee what he's doing and train him on the, uh. On the, uh, computer side of things, all the record keeping and sampling and all that sort of stuff. And then, uh, continue with the other length of time until the water, oh. Three years is up. And then the same thing, we'll get him to the same rural water conference, cause that's three years from now. And, uh, he could take the water track and then get his class. You might have to start with D, I don't know if you can skip right to C. We'll have to find that out. If you can just go ahead and take the C right away, but anyway. We have a plan in place and some deadlines where we're gonna do the hand, the handoff, so, and I'm always gonna be around, so. We, we're working towards that, so.
Good idea, to have it all planned out.
Yes.
Yep.
That way you guys know that, you know, somebody asks, like, how's Eli coming on his, getting that, we do have a plan, so. Between now and then, I gave him a whole bunch of study guides and, uh, exam, uh, re, re-pressure stuff and all that today. This winter, when, uh, when he's done washing the ceiling in the shop, he can, he can, uh, sit down and read the books. That's, that's all.
And he'll be locked in until he's seventy-five. All right, anything else then, Brad?
No.
Sounds like it's, everything, uh. The fence down there is still sagging, you know, is, does the pollution control, do they worry about that or not?
Uh, they do say it's, it's part of our, our permit that we do have to maintain a fence around there when it signs every five hundred feet. There, there's a description in their permit of what it's supposed to be. That, it, we really need to be fixed where those geese are eating that guy's soybeans, cause they, it's just an open area there. They went over there, cleared out about three acres of soybeans.
Really?
Have you been down there? He's got, he's got fake coyotes down there, not to try to deter them, but they ate a, a minimum of three acres of bean.
Wow.
Just wiped them out right to the ground.
Hmm, really?
There was probably a hundred and fifty geese down there.
Yeah.
Swans and dogs and a crippled goose and a weird goose that's not even from this part of the world.
Really?
Yeah, so it's been a zoo down there.
I looked in the gate there, I think it was a week ago, Sunday or something. And, yeah, there was a lot of geese there then.
I'd sooner not have them.
Yeah.
They can mess up your people counts when you're trying to discharge.
How, is there ways to deter them?
Yeah, you can.
Get the cannon and shoot it off every so often?
Yeah, there's, what was the other thing you could put down there? Well, you can put your faith, they, the fake coyotes don't even fail them, they just, you'd walk right around them.
They were like on the other side of the patch for like a week.
Yeah, and they figured out these things are ruined and then they went back there and started eating beans again. But, uh, yeah, we're not good neighbors if we don't fix that fence and keep the geese from walking through it. I mean, they could probably fly over and fly back, but.
Yeah.
Uh.
At least we fixed the ground traffic.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Third treasure.
I didn't forget, we had a building permit or a zoning permit submitted today, so it should be, uh, did this make it in their packet?
Yeah, they got a copy, yeah.
Uh, two ten South Ewing, they, previous, the year ago, had a concrete driveway, they. Concrete was busting up, they put it. Concrete was busting up. They put it gravel and now they're just going back with the concrete.
Should we include this bit here too? But then we should uh, okay this, this can move forward, right? Yeah, do we wanna, how are we gonna do that to maybe have him set the manhole? Pull the curb out?
So, yeah, and the other, the other problem with that is I talked to W W today and they said, well, they don't wanna do. If, if somebody else is setting the manhole, I guess first they said they wouldn't have time to do the pipe this year anyway. But if somebody else was setting the catch basin. They would want them to do curve or, or curve to get done. If you willing, they give us a quote, gave it.
Yeah. And we could probably find somebody to get that cement worked on. I would think yet.
Yeah.
So I mean, with that, we should probably okay this with the stipulation that there'll be um.
Well, I guess the other problem with that is if. Have him set the structure.
Yeah.
Then we have to have, do we need that in the quote as well?
Way below the bidding thing, you know. Um, it was just like a afterthought this morning when we were talking to him that. You could, you have your equipment here, set it. Take out that radius so a cement guy can come in and don't have to have a bobcat or whatever, a backhoe to get rid of that. So. I mean, would we just add on another? Well, I don't know what a uh, catch basin will cost. But I mean, this bit here is way considerably less than what the other one is. So would we just put this? Okay, this price right here, contingent with the. Catch basin and taking out the curb and the radius.
So this work is gonna be done on top on, on uh, Halk Street. Or is this the part that's down at the bottom of the hill?
It gets hooked into a pipe down there too, twenty-four inch underground. That's what that twenty-four by twelve T is to hook that up.
Okay.
To that big underground uh, plastic pipe.
But I mean, anyway, this, this is for on top of the hill by that, by that house on.
Yeah, on top of that.
Get rid of the rip rap. Down to the middle of the.
What are we gonna do with all the rap?
Well, Eli might have a spot to put it or.
Will that?
That rip rap.
Will that run down to your tractor, be able to pick up those?
I told him I'd help him with the bobcat.
Oh.
We got a bucket now with teeth on it, so we should be able to flip it in there pretty good. A load or two would be all gone.
This way at least it's getting done yet this year.
Yeah. But there could be what, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars more, but it's up to catch basin and with that.
I don't know what they charge for.
And again, it's a repair. It's not working the way it is. The water on the east side of the street comes, when a heavy rains overflows and comes in. Ends up in them people's yards. So we're just taking care of business. So. Need a. Motion on this or just? Get the job done.
Do we wanna wait until we get a bid for the cement? If we can put it on the, on the agenda for the special meeting that we're gonna have to have for the budget?
See if it can happen that fast. We want it done next week, right?
You're looking at already, yeah, we're already in September.
Yeah. I don't know. Cement guys will probably be hard to get to, maybe. All we can do is try. Put it on hold or? Or should we just okay this part of it? So he can order up the pipe too. That's another thing. Pipe's gotta be ordered.
Well, if it's something that we're looking to alleviate the problem that's there.
Before it.
It's gonna take maybe, you know, it's gonna take steps. Here's step one.
Yeah, there you go.
Do it.
Cause that way the pipe can be ordered and uh, everything he needs. Worked out, we get the bids, they can progress with it.
Yeah, I would rather, I would rather move forward.
Okay, with that being said, somebody wanna make a motion and approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the uh. Two hundred and whatever feet of pipe insta- two hundred and twenty feet of pipe installation, a Blue River Escalator.
Come on a second.
One second.
On favor?
Alright.
I can just, motion carried.
Yeah. I'll get it from him.
Uh, G T. One, two, two, five. Any questions on that? If not, somebody make a motion to approve, motion to approve. One second.
Hey, can second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Five, four, here. One other thing, Eli. I know it hasn't gotten done over the years, but. We put in some new isolation valves, you know, and each corners and that. Should they, maybe as a question, should they be exercised before winter?
We had talked about.
Yeah, we already talked about this. And so Eli is gonna take an inventory, make a plan, make a list of all the uh, main. World in town. There's plenty of them. The map, most of them are located on there, but then as, as you find more, you can add them to this Excel spreadsheet. Um, we were talking about, we, there were another, another town around here has a thing that mounts right on the back of the pickup truck. And you go drive over there and then you can set it over the thing and drop it in and it'll, it'll open, close, open, close. And it'll work the valve back and forth. But for now, like I could try doing it by hand. But there's, there's easier, less backbreaking ways of doing it. Um, but yeah, most, most cities do have a plan for exercising.
It'd be before winter, you know, cause that's the worst time.
Yeah, you know, the thing is, a lot of them too, they got silted in. And so there, there's gravel down in there and you can't even get a good. On there with the wrench and those will have to be hydrovac or something to get that out of there. But um. Identifying those and then at least having a spreadsheet with them on there. We can say operates. Doesn't turn full of silt, you know, so we could have a plan of how to attack those. And so uh. That's on his radar. He's got a.
Okay.
A plan, I guess.
Alright, that was just a question I had and forgot to ask him. Alright, Sue. Back to you.
So the first one is a resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine. That's establishing the addresses for the Graham Street.
Building?
Yep. We finally got the parcel property IDs, so.
Do we have a motion on each one or can we do all of them together?
Um, you could do a motion on, on, on all the resolutions?
Yeah.
Yeah, you should be able to do it all together.
Okay.
And the second one is a resident had brought to our attention or to my attention that we did not have a data practices policy for the public. And we did not have a data practices policy to request for data about you or your rights as a subject. So I worked with the state of Minnesota and we got the data practices. Ready and I just need the resolutions to approve those. And we have to be renewed or reviewed by August first of each year. And it's just a motion if there's nothing changed. Usually it won't change unless there's a change in my position or.
Law.
There's a new law that's updated.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine, ten and eleven.
Somebody make a, or someone a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have those, motion carried.
The next one is I received a letter from a resident regarding the ordinance violations. And that would be just for John Lewis. So, Ralph, do you have any?
I'll have your fireflyers mic for a brief moment.
And I have this letter and.
Yep. So council has any questions on that? And I do have the attached um, list of noxious weeds. Or protected weeds, sorry.
You have a list of the protected weeds in your yard?
List of the protected weeds.
Yeah, he gave.
I have no problem with anything to do with. A different code as long as it follows our codes, ice restrictions. Whatever. So I mean, that's. Development.
I've seen that, but I can't find it.
You know, I can have a yard full of eight foot high weeds and say that it's natural prairie, that's.
The three thousand one that, that sent this one?
I do not. Okay, no fun that one. I know the other copy is.
What was, what was the um? Was identified in the letter that we sent?
The letter we sent was, that letter? Yes, we don't have, cause I just sent out the first letter. Um, and the first letter stated that there was. There was noxious, wasn't it noxious weeds? Overgrowth was overgrown.
Okay.
Noxious weeds and over.
Yes, noxious weeds and overgrowth.
No vehicles?
There were vehicles, but this letter, this discussion is just for.
Oh, okay.
The weeds or the overgrowth.
And I couldn't respond to the vehicles thing until I got the information about the data practices.
Right.
And you said that was fine.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So basically we have an action plan for that, that was sent up.
Oh, for the vehicle.
Well, no, we haven't got it yet, but for the, looks like for the weeds or for the, the overgrowth, um, that there is an action plan because he is working with. The Minnesota Soil and Conservation.
Okay.
Vehicle action plan is waiting for the data practices.
Right.
Information where the data practice.
Well, it comes to the height of weeds. Data, somebody said that then?
There was a new law passed in twenty twenty-three, went into effect in August of twenty twenty-four. It's a ma- managed natural landscape. It's a new law. I've had a lot of trouble. Talking to the government people that are, you know, up on it. The best advice I got was from the soil and water. People in Blue Earth County. The D N R transferred me to them. They are an extension of the state people. The lady down there, I talked to her on the phone for half an hour. It was all new to her. She repealed the law. Her best advice to me was. You gotta get rid of the maintained grass. You can't have noxious weeds. After that, you can grow anything you want on your private property.
And they override any city ordinance that's already.
Part of the new law is to stop municipalities. From putting up roadblocks for people to do that. That is the spirit and the intent of the law.
What do they consider manageable?
That's, that's gotta be, they're still working on that. And believe me, I've tried very hard to look at that. Uh, I can tell you that I read one thing somewhere. And I looked at so much stuff, it's gonna be hard for me to tell you where I saw that at. But I'm trying to look into it when I thought about it. It was different manageable practices on this natural landscape. And the lowest one was like you plant these special grasses, these prairie grasses.
Grass.
And you had to mow them once a year.
How tall do they grow?
They can grow three foot tall, ten foot tall, whatever they grow. And they have to be mowed once a year. Now, if you get into pollinator habitat. That gets to be a little more manageable, but pollinator habitat has a lot more protections. That included with it. So like if you have registered pollinator habitat, which is what I'm going to do with my lot on the west end of the road. That has a lot more management practices, but it also puts a lot of extra protections on that property.
Where's that lot?
On the end of Ewing Street and on the west side of the road.
I thought you were gonna put a building there.
And put in a building there and then whatever I have left, I'm gonna put in there. I'm gonna put the building, a driveway to the building and the rest pollinator habitat.
Well, he has an action plan. We'll need some kind of outline of what's okay and what's not, so we'll just have to wait for that.
And I, believe me, I'm trying to find out about them. They, they, this is, but you know, you call. The soil and water people are supposed to be involved in that. And there's a directive from the governor. That went out to all state agencies that told them they are supposed to. Help individuals. Technical, legal and financial support to accomplish these goals. They even have grants if people in town are interested to change their property over to this. They'll give people money to do it.
I think the governor's got bigger problems than the grass and weeds.
So this is also has to go along to legal setbacks, correct?
It has to be on private property.
Yeah, but I mean, even with a setback, you can't have a eight foot natural par- prairie right up next to the road. That's.
On the private property. You can.
But there's still a city easement.
Yes.
You're gonna have.
Survey your property and wherever your property line is, is where you can have this.
Now, it can't be in right away.
It can't be in.
That's what I.
That's not like the. No, it only applies to private property.
Okay, so we, we understand that you're trying hard to get the information, but do you, do you think you have a timeline as to like?
I've been trying to get that information. I know. It's, the guy in the soil and water in the city said he was gonna try to get. Blue Earth County to try to get some stuff. So, and I'm also gonna try to call the U S.
Or Street or whatever.
Yeah, the. And but you know what? I'm thinking they're gonna get the best information on this is probably gonna be someone like the Sierra Club, Worldwide Life Club. The Minnesota. Uh, Committee for uh. That one that does ecological advisory. They're probably gonna be more involved with it. So. I'm trying to find out about it, it's all like, I mean, you know, you can call and try to ask them. They're hard to get. It's new too. So.
Well, like you say, as long as it's got the setbacks and. Within the covenants and instructions. And you have a plan. We'll work at it as we see.
Then we wanna review this like next month or maybe if John has an update, he can just let me know and I.
If I can help you at all, certainly, no.
True.
Would be nice to know if you, whatever you hear.
It would.
Person.
Yeah.
As long we are fighting with.
And I, and I. I've come up here and explained to you that I'm trying to find out about that. And working very diligently to, to.
So it, the, the ma- managed natural landscape law, is that, that's a Minnesota law, I'm assuming?
It's a Minnesota law. I think the statutes even add my response to it.
Yeah, it is on the back page. Yep. We'll just put it on like a review for next month if we have any updates, sir.
Go.
Alright, um, do wastewater processing increase?
So I called them and they are increasing it to the two point seven percent. So it's gonna go up about four dollars and ninety cents. Um, per ton. So we've gotta figure that into our budget and I think I did that and I, yeah. Um, I am waiting for, I did put in a call to L J P. She wants to meet with me in person to discuss this. So I'm waiting for a response on some dates that work for her. So there's.
Their contract though. It was just last year where you renewed.
Yeah, we just renewed it last year. Yeah. That was another thing I was thinking about, but I know we have contracts, so we'll have to wait. Um, the budget review, we have a few things. The budget's pretty much, we're almost done. We just have a few things left we need to go over. So we need to set. A workshop. Cause I did put in your packets, um, the budget that I had finished and then I did a couple more tweaks to it. So now it goes down. Like you guys don't have that. I think that one shows up at eighty dollars.
Did we add anything in for legal?
Yes.
Yeah, so much.
Like fifteen thousand and then for legal.
Yeah, because you know. I'm sure they're gonna be pushed back on some of these.
Anytime we, any service that we have for the sheriff, it's seventy dollars per service.
Yeah, we're gonna have to pay for that.
Processing service, whatever. Process servers, whatever, so.
Do we have fifteen thousand that we allocated for legal?
Yes.
Okay. Because there's a couple of them that are probably gonna.
We're gonna end up probably having to do an abatement on a couple of them.
Yeah.
Um, it is what it is.
Yeah. Alright.
So yeah, we need to know when you guys wanna do a budget workshop and hopefully we can do the budget workshop. Prior and then have the special meeting because we need to have the resolutions for the proposed levy and the proposed budget. I have to have those to the county by the end of the season.
Oh, really?
So we're kinda behind the eight ball right now.
Oh.
So if we can set a meeting for next week.
Yeah, um, cause I've got, I'll be working in the fields here pretty soon too, so.
How about next Monday with that? How about next Monday, would that be?
That's what I was hoping for, yeah, Monday would be perfect.
Monday is kind of a slow day for me, so.
Yeah, it's the only day uh, it will be around next week.
Then I guess it's something.
So, time, if we started, say, the workshop at six and then we could save the reg, cause we'll have to post the re- or the special meeting.
Correct, yeah.
So we should have a time for that, um.
So we could even do the workshop at five, have the special meeting at six.
Okay, that, that's.
I mean, does that work for everybody?
That would work for me.
Works for me.
It may work.
Does that work for you, Scott?
Well, some comes up unexpectedly.
Right, okay, cause it shouldn't take long, the special meeting isn't gonna take long, cause it's the only. Topic.
Five minutes late.
Discussion.
Yeah.
Other than, I will put on there the bid for the concrete, because if we don't have it on there, we can't discuss it.
Right.
So I will put that on there as well.
Okay.
So. And the rental inspectors, I am still trying to get ahold of somebody that's gonna help me, and so far I haven't found anybody. The only thing I can find is, um, they go, a lot of them go through, there's some link on the state of Minnesota that you can find rental inspectors.
That Judd don't do anymore?
No, well, he does, but he's so hard, I had a um, conversation with a resident that um, manages some properties in town. And they had said that.
Never hear back from them.
Right, and they schedule a meeting and then he doesn't show, or he cancels, like I said, last year, it took me and another resident. To finally get him out here to do a couple.
And it wasn't a very thorough.
Correct.
Inspection.
Right, um, some of the other towns, they don't even do them. They have a rental license and they don't do inspect.
I would say can, let's continue to try to find somebody that can do it, that has some credentials.
Right, yeah, so.
We could be in trouble with, with not any rules at all, that some of these places could really go.
Well, some cities have that, they do not have a rental license, they.
Who's Man Kato help?
Who I called and he is so booked out that they have their own, can't remember his name, but I talked to him earlier last week. So, I just wanted to give you an update on it, cause it was on my list for our last meeting.
Alright.
So.
Need a motion on your mileage expense? Somebody make a motion for mileage expense for clerk or bank, post office runs.
We'll make a motion to approve the ninety-nine forty.
Someone a second.
A second.
On favor, I, I oppose, motion carried, unfinished business?
I don't have any.
But you got any, oh, we got the church, the letter too, yeah.
Yes. That was in my, in our payment box and they asked if I would distribute it to.
When you put that on your new business or recognize it on your new business, um, nothing under unfinished? Uh, new business. Saint John's Lutheran Church will be celebrating a hundred and fifty-fifth anniversary. September fourteenth on Sunday. Uh, it's this Sunday.
Yep.
At one thirty P M. And they're be thrilled to have a representative from the city greet an assembly at the service.
You'll probably be there once, Robert?
Probably, yeah. So.
Amy too.
Judy asked me, but I, I, um, I've got Kaylee's baby shower that day, so I won't.
There'll also be a luncheon at eleven.
Starts at one.
That's what it says, yeah, but.
We, it's a big gap.
Yeah, there's such a big gap between the eleven. Eleven lunch and one thirty service.
I think they're having a morning service that day too, and then they have an early service and then lunch and then the late service.
They are gonna have the regular service.
Cause I, I talked to the pastor, um, because my former German foreign exchange student is gonna do the Lord's Prayer in German. Um, cause they used to have their services in German back in, when they started. I felt for a tradition or a throwback, they wanted to have that, so I arranged.
Oh, really?
Great time.
But you think there is a regular nine A M. service?
Think there is a regular.
Tell me, uh, you know, thanks, we were tapped in.
Yeah.
I am gonna give a speech.
I better brush up on my German. Alright.
You're gonna handle that.
Probably been a member there longer than us.
Me, you're gonna be there to be.
You're gonna represent?
I'll be there, yeah, bye bye.
All day. So, I will see what's going on.
Alright, anything else under new business?
The only other thing is I have is this general assembly from C O G that I put in your packets, um. It's the yearly, yearly um, assembly they have. I don't think council, council's never gone since I've been there, but we have had a couple from other areas.
Thank you.
So I don't know if council wants to go.
Never heard, I will be out of the country. It'll be in Canada. Bitching, so if anybody wants to attend, I guess have at our September seventeenth at four thirty.
Let me know, then I can RSVP, the total who's gonna be there.
Alright, anything under miscellaneous? Council, anybody, miscellaneous? If not, somebody make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
One second.
Second.
On favor?
I oppose, motion carried.
Thanks, everybody.